And we got a heavy agenda today, which who knows what that means?
I heard something about land the plane.
Yeah, we're gonna land the plane pretty quick. So let's call this meeting to order for March 12th at seven o'clock, 7:05. And stand for the pledge and then Marilyn's gonna do the invitation. So I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Ms. Marilyn? You there? Where is? Okay.
Our Father, our Father, our Father, Father, be pious and obedient, coming this hour, Lord, to say thank you. Lord, I thank you because I don't know why I feel like this minute, Lord.
Oh, stop it, Marilyn, don't do this to me.
No. I'm good and I'm blessed to deal with brotherly and sisterly dwell together in unity. Please, come in there, Lord. Lord, I come to say thank you. Truly, I thank you for life, health, and a reasonable portion of strength. I thank you for this little town of Oakland. Lord, you allow me to be here from the year eighty-five, eighty-four up until right now. And the many times I've been to the commission meeting, I never felt like this way. But you know, you know what's happening, Lord? And we are sisters and brothers. Whether we lack attention that the mayor have made or ten minutes, we still love each other. Lord Jesus, we thank you for her being here for thirty years to doing the job that she has done. Lord, she given up the cow. And Lord, whoever you want in the seat, let it be your will, not ours, your will. And whoever in the seat, Lord, make your word, Lord, not what they want to do, but what you would have them to do. Father God, we just thank you right now for each and every one of the sound of our voice. And to that touch down comes, Lord. And let us realize what we said. And your word said, one of these days we gonna read just what we saw. And let the word to my mind and the meditation of my heart be accepted in thy sight. Lord, my strength and redeeming in Jesus' name, my friend, amen.
Well, I bet you all didn't realize you've done this before.
All right. At least.
Okay, hold the call, Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Raymond.
Right here, right field. Eric, start.
Here.
Commissioner McMillan is at National League of Cities, but he's not here with us. Okay, so the first thing we have on the agenda, and we do have a big agenda, is the public forum. The public forum is for anybody who is here that wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments short and that you have signed it. Do I have anybody? Okay. So next is the consent agenda. Do we have anything at the table that we want to pull out or talk about?
I'll make the motion then to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, all in paper? Now we get to the stuff. So we have an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four dash oh three. Yeah, I'll read it just a second. Okay. And if any, yeah, Lynn just made more agendas if anybody didn't get one. So this is ordinance twenty twenty-four zero three, First Public Carrying Force Street and SR fifty, Small Scale Future Land Use Amendment, Mixed Use Commercial to Mixed Use Activities Center. An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a small-scale town future land use map amendment of its comprehensive plan for mixed-use commercial to mixed-use activities center for the project Fourth Street Village for certain real property owned by Oakland West five zero LLC, generally located on the south side of West Colonial Drive at Fourth Street, as more particularly described herein with an approximate size of twenty-one point two five acres, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date. Okay, Brad, I take it you're gonna talk about this?
We'll do my best, Mayor. Yes, we can. So for the record, I am Brad Quinn. This is Waitren, serving as your contractor town planner this evening. So I have a short presentation about this case, and just so everyone is aware, my presentation actually will be for both of your ordinances for twenty twenty-four oh three and twenty twenty-four oh four, because they are both for the same projects for the Fourth Street Village. So what my presentation will be for both, but you will be making separate motions on those ordinances. So you all are aware of that as I go through this. So just for a little bit of background, this property is located at the southeast corner of Tub Street and State Road fifty, West Colonial Boulevard. The applicant is Gemini Land Development, and the owner is Oakland West five zero LLC. And we all are here this evening. So they are here and they do have a presentation for you. The site is about twenty-one acres in size. So what they're requesting, the first ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash oh three, is a small-scale future land use amendment. And the second amendment, second ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, is then a rezoning to plan and development. And I'll go through more specific here in just a second. Next, please. So here's an aerial of the property, just so everybody's aware. I'm sure everybody doesn't know where this is, but that is the property that's under consideration this evening. Next, please. So with this, the project overall, what the project is, is being requested, it's a mixed-use village as part of a mixed-use town center. It's being proposed with a maximum of a hundred and ten, could you go back, Liz? Sorry, that's okay. It's proposed with a hundred and ninety multifamily units, a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial uses and twenty-five thousand square feet of office uses. What you have in your packet this evening does propose a hundred and ten room hotel. I was advised by the applicant this evening that they are going to remove that request for the hotel. So you'll hear that from them when they present that removal and still maintain the same amount of multifamily units of a hundred and ninety, the same hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail and twenty-five thousand of office. But I'll let them address that more specifically when they come up. In terms of the density, based on the hundred and ninety units, that is a ten point eight dwelling units per acre. And the floor area, including the hotel, is a zero point two eight. And actually, that number would stay about the same because they will replace the hotel with a mixed-use building as part of it. So that number won't change significantly at all. So what's important is, is the small-scale future land use amendment. Currently, the property has what's called a mixed-use commercial future land use within your comprehensive plan. What that allows for, just so everybody's aware, is it allows for a project that's primarily commercial. But what it says is, in under that land use, fifty percent of the development has to be as residential. It has a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre and a maximum floor area ratio of zero point three five. A few years ago, the town, you adopted a new future land use classification within your future land use element, which is called the Mixed Use Activities Center, which is currently within your future land use element. And that's what the request is, is to change the future land use from that mixed-use commercial to the Mixed Use Activities Center. What's important about that is the way that's established within your future land use element, it's very specific about where it's to be applied. And what your future land use element says, now that you adopted it, is that it's only to apply it along the State Road fifty corridor, the West Colonial Boulevard corridor. Or it also says the area is near there, but basically it's for your major State Road fifty corridor. That's the only place this land use can apply. It also talks about why you establish that is to create these kind of town center kind of developments, not standalone, single development kind of things. Having a mixed-use projects that create like a town center. And because of that, to be able to make that a viable type of project, under that land use, the maximum density is twenty-five dwelling units per acre and a maximum floor area ratio of two, of a two, two point zero, which mean, so it's more dense, more intense. However, the density that they're requesting is significantly less than twenty-five. They're at ten point eight dwellings per acre. They're not at the twenty, anywhere near the twenty-five. But that is their request on this, on their small-scale future land use is go to that mixed-use activities center. Next, please. What I do want to hear is go through quickly through the process. Because I mean, it's also, what we're going through right now, it's the first step of a five-step process. And the first step is this future land use amendment and rezoning. And that's what you are considering this evening. And when this comes back to you for your second reading, that's the first step. That does not give them approval to build anything yet. That gives them the entitlements, the approvals, and what I like to say, it gives the boundaries by which they have to develop by what you all approve as a town commission. If that's approved, then they would come to step two, and that is the preliminary subdivision site plan. And that's when the concept plan that you have this evening, that still has to be fleshed out more, that's when that would come back to you all with the more details. I usually would call it like the thirty or sixty percent engineering plan, where you actually have the parking layout done, you have the more specific uses identified, you have some stormwater done, and you have that. You also would have the building elevations, and that would go through your appearance review board. It would go through your planning and zoning board, and then it would come back to you all again as a town commission to approve that. So they still have a whole other round of public hearings. If they get approved with you all through this process, they will be coming back again with some more specific details of the project. One, after that step, if that gets approved, then they come back through basically an administrative, a staff process of approving the hundred percent final construction engineering plans. And we review it to make sure it meets all the condition requirements you as the town commission would put on it, as well as meeting all the town codes and requirements. And the last piece would be if they're doing a plat of a subdivision, that would come to you all to platter it. And then ultimately, then they would start pulling building permits to go vertical with the buildings. So there is a lot of more work to do, even if this does get approved. There's more public hearings ahead of them and more, quite a bit more. Next, please. This is the concept plan. I think the applicant has a better image of this. But what this is showing is what they're proposing. And the buildings, the way they're oriented, is you have fifty on the top of the screen, on the top of the map. And it's, the buildings are in a U shape. And what's important, at least, can you point out the road that goes through the, the, yes, ma'am, right there? There's the reverse frontage road or the creation of that, that alternative main street that's part of something the town has been talking about to create that new main street parallel to State Road fifty. And that's why you see the buildings oriented the way they are on that concept plan, where they're focused towards that, that new potential main street to occur as part of that overall development of the project. With that layout as well, you see on the bottom right is a large wetland area that's being maintained and also actually incorporated somewhat of amenity within it, as well as a gathering area that would be part of it. Because what that future land use talks about, again, is creating this kind of live-work community, but also providing public gathering spaces and things as part of the project. And that's what they're proposing to do with this project. So that's the general layout of that. I'll let the applicant give you more details on the layout as it's designed, but that's the general layout of it. Next, please. But what's important about this layout, and this is something that I want to make sure is very clear tonight as well. The layout that you just saw, go ahead, next, please, is part of the vision plan that you as a town commission back in January twenty twenty-three, you accepted it. And that's how I stated in your staff report as well. You didn't approve it, you didn't adopt it, you didn't incorporate it into your comprehensive plan, you didn't adopt it into your land development. But you did accept it and say, generally, this is the direction we were looking to implement this idea on State Road fifty. So that's important because it provides, I think, the direction and support of why they're proposing. Because, next, please, Elise? No, one more. No. Their plan on the left is what I showed you, the plan on the right is what's in your vision plan. And you can see what they are proposing mirrors it pretty much exactly in terms of the building layout and arrangement of how that project is. So they do use that as their guide to put this together. When I looked at it as your planner, I looked at it in relation to that vision plan because of the information that I have to look at, this to me is the direction that the commission provided in January twenty twenty-three. Doesn't mean you still have to have that same vision today, because that was what you said back then. But you can't, you can't. But it is, they are implementing what was shown in that vision since twenty twenty-three. So I wanted to point that out. Next, please. In terms of the impacts and infrastructure, they did provide all the analysis that's required. It's in your packets, that's why your packets are so large. They did do the transportation analysis. And again, because of State Road fifty being such a major roadway, the impacts of State Road fifty are not significant and it's not expected to result in any negative impacts to the level of service on that roadway. And you can see here that that trips, but they did that analysis. It was reviewed by my traffic engineer. Next, please. The environmental impact, they do have an environmental study as part of their submission, where they did do an assessment of the property. Again, as I already said, they are going to be protecting that area of the wetlands and actually incorporate that as an amenity within their projects. And there wasn't any unanticipated, no significant environmental impact. And of course, they'll have to draw appropriate environmental permitting if they go through this process and they get approved. That would be part of the permitting process. And with utilities, of course, we'll be working with your public work department and with corporate utilities. And of course, with stormwater, working with the town as well with the St. John's River Water Management District to meet all those stormwater requirements. Next, please. So in summary, what is being asked of you this evening is for just the first reading, tonight is just your first reading, is a small-scale future land use amendment to go to the Mixed Use Activities Center under ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three, under ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four. It then would be to rezone the property to a planned development zoning for specifically for the Fourth Street Village project with a development agreement that has the information about the limitations on development, what they can do or can't do. And as I say here, what this does, if this is approved, it provides those boundaries for development to move forward. It provides the limitations, it provides assurances to the town of what will get developed. And it also provides assurances to the developer of what they can develop as they go through this. If there would be any significant change to this plan moving forward, if this were to be approved, it would have to come back through the process and get reviewed again. They have to develop this in full compliance with as if it would be to approve by you at the town commission. Next, please. So I want to go again, next steps, move forward, if this is to move forward, subdivision plan and site plan coming back to you, construction plans in the plan fired. So there are more steps after this, if this is to get approved. Next, please. And from your staff, we do, we did review this, and we do recommend adoption as it proposes you. We do find it compliant with your comprehensive plan and land development code and recommend approval of these two ordinances. Next. This was reviewed by your planning and zoning board at their meeting on February twentieth, and there was very good discussion, I will say absolutely, about both of these ordinances. So on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three, which is the amendment, Small Scale Future Land Use Amendment to Mixed Use Activities Center, your planning zoning board did recommend approval by a vote of four to one. On ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four, which was the zoning to plan development for the Fourth Street Village, they recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Actually, I believe that's the end, and that is for the sake, if you have any. Yes.
If we are asking to go forward, and we have accepted it, but it is subject to some sort of changes, what's the process for that? Because it's a little bit different now in my mind than what the plan looks like. How do we do that? And how do we convey what might be different?
With what's being proposed this evening? Yes, you make those comments this evening, and if it was the board as a commission wants to pursue that, you would make that as part of your motion of approval of that first reading. And then it would come back to you. We'd work with the developer to make those changes.
Okay.
When it would come back to you.
And then do we want to hear from the developer first, because he'd already put some sort of change in here?
I think that would be good if you would.
Okay. And let's do that.
I don't know. That's why I ask, to get it all on the table.
Good evening. Tara Tedrow Lounslaw, two and five North Yola Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. There's another PowerPoint presentation. I'll try not to duplicate too much of what you just heard your staff give you a presentation on, because that was very thorough. At your P and Z, I had to do the whole thing, and I was, boy, I wish I could have had you there. Your presentation was very good. I was picturing on that one, but thank you for that presentation tonight. So when that comes up, I do want to get out on the front end that we did make a change to the plan. We heard some feedback at P and Z, and despite getting a unanimous recommendation for approval on that plan, there were comments that were made about the fact that a hotel may not be the best use, even though it was part of the vision plan. And we heard those comments, and since then, we've heard some additional comments that perhaps a hotel is not an ideal use. We took the plan literally as it was presented. So it is an exact copy of what came out of your vision plan, highly unusual. Most of my clients come forth with a PV, they look at the intent of a plan, and then they ask to change some things. So in this instance, we really just copied and pasted exactly what was in that plan. We said, if this is what the town wants, let's give them what they want. Sounds like maybe the hotel is not what everybody wants, and so we're happy to take that out. You know, we kicked around, do we ask for more residential units? Do we ask for more commercial? We thought, let's leave it as it is. We'll take the hundred and hotel we're now. Instead, we'll just leave it at the same density, same intensity of uses, and we will just put a mixed-use building in its place. So on a second reading, we would bring back a concept plan that would show, instead of on that hotel pad, which was contemplated at a four-story hotel, that it would instead be a maximum of a three-story mixed-use building, meaning you would have that retail or commercial or office on the first floor, and then you would have your residential units above. So we can talk through that, but I did want to let folks know, because I'm sure there's some in the audience who might have wanted to know that on the front end, too, and just wanted to make sure we understood that going forward. Thank you. Next slide. This just shows you the context of where the property is. You can see that we are in a very different part of the town than we sit tonight. We are sandwiched between Colonial and the Turnpike. So quite different than the feel that you get when you are here in your core of Oakland. And I think that's why you've had some policies and visioning plans crafted accordingly. On the next slide, you'll see that it just gives you the overview of the twenty-one point two five vacant acres. Four point three nine of those are wetlands, propose future land use of Mixed Use Activities Center with a people rezoning. And as you heard your staff note, that Mixed Use Activities Center designation is intended specifically for urban-style developments adjacent to and in close proximity to State Road fifty in the West Colonial five corridor. This is the Village A, again, coming from that State Road vision plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-three. You can see the arrows pointing to where our property is in the different types of villages that were contemplated. And those villages were contemplated because at that time, the town saw a need. You go to the next slide, and part of that visioning plan was to try to direct the future growth in this area. Again, it's a very different part of Oakland than you'll get when you are here in your core. When you're over on Colonial, it is a very urban corridor. And so the thought process was, what do we do on a place that has tens of thousands of cars going by every day? How do we direct the future of growth there in a way that could try to reduce some of the automobile dependence, can create a sense of place, so you don't just have this being strip center after strip center or single-use commercial after single-use commercial? How do we break it up with a form-based code that would allow for different design standards, building typologies and diversity requirements, as well as building and material requirements and requirements that in terms of architecture and design, that we create a sense of pedestrian form and place that will be better than just what your average commercial development along fifty is. And again, those are things that were taken out of the town's visioning plan. Great planning principles for an area like State Road fifty, especially considering where we're located. And it said that this is something that will allow for, so you don't just keep Oakland as a pass-through community that's not going to benefit from that incremental value that traffic can bring. So we can have a sense of place, we can capture some of that traffic in a way that is more meaningful than perhaps just your standard commercial zoning might otherwise get you. And the next slide that shows you again, this is directly from the town's visioning. This goes through, it also doubles as a vision test, because I don't know how small the font was going to be up there, but it talks through the building typology and the diversity. So for our project specifically, you can pull from this page, it goes through what you would do in a mixed-use building that is three-story and a multifamily building that is three-story or a multifamily that is two-story. The exact types of diversity of buildings that you all want to have. And that's what we would build, and that gets you the predictability of what does this project look like? This project's going to look exactly like you all put in your vision, if that's, if that's what you're looking for, and that's what we have suggested in our application. And the next slide is another page out of that vision plan that goes through the building methods and even the building materials. And that is going to be a policy that was meant to create more sustainable building within the town that had better, more durable building materials, and that was going to be more sustainable over time. So again, that's exactly what we would be utilizing in the project. Ultimately, if it gets designed and approved, that design would have to come back before your appearance from people, your planning commission, as well as your town commission. So you all have a lot of opportunities to take from what we are showing you as a colored concept plan and then take it to actual final engineering, construction level plans with architectural renderings of every view shot of our buildings so that you can see what it actually looks like based on these visioning principles that you all had come up with. The next slide again is just another set of some of those example renderings that you all had said, when we create these villages, when we want to have a sense of place, what should it look like? Again, some examples to give that predictability of development. As I mentioned, this is an urban corridor. It's actually designed as one. Your code says that it is an urban corridor-designed district specifically. And that policy says that you are accommodating attached mixed-use buildings adjacent to town centers. Says that you want to allow larger buildings within the most tense part of the corridor. You want to provide a center that's multimodal for commuters and residents. And importantly, you want to provide the town with a predictable outcome of development. So I think the nice thing is, there are many projects that I do where I get a concept plan approved, and people say, well, what is this going to look like? What are you actually going to build? We say, well, there's not really any design standards in the code, so it's going to be what the market dictates. In this instance, your town is going to be able to get some predictability and say, we can point to you exactly what it's going to look like. And then we welcome you to come back to the public hearings, so you can see it at that time when we get our final design plans. This is the PUD plan. This doesn't do a whole lot for the imagination, but if you go to the next page, as we had discussed, it is a town center. It has a hundred and ninety multifamily units, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of that mixed commercial between retail and office, and a hundred and ten room hotel, which you can scratch off as a line item, still keeping that same density and intensity of uses, still keeping our seven point two acres of open space. So we would have that event center that overlooks that preserved four point three nine acre wetland. It's larger than that, but the four point three nine acres on our property specifically. And if you go one more slide, as you heard from your staff, your staff did find our request to be consistent with your future land use. They found it to be consistent with the comp plan and the applicable codes, as well as the design district specifically and your visioning plan. And they recommended approval of the request entitlements. We would ask for that same recommendation, consistent with what came from your planning and zoning board as well. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have. We do have our team here. We have Mike Morrissey to answer. What's better planning questions than I can? And so I will have it come up as anything specific.
I have a couple of questions. I'm going to start, and then we'll, you know, have questions to the table. If you have commitments for these buildings in terms of for the retail or commercial components? Not yet. And you know, the reason that it makes it a little difficult, obviously, one of our members of our team, Steve Healy, is a broker by trade. So this is bread and butter, a broker by trade, so bread and butter what Steve does in addition to development. And so part of us being able to bring in anybody for a letter of intent is to tell them, what do we have entitled? Because right now, we don't have anything. So we have a hope, and we have a vision plan that the town gave us. But there's some modifications that are coming to that now. So we're going to work on that, but that's going to be something that we get when we can say, here's our plan, it has been approved by the town, and now we can go and start to bring a pad-ready development to entice those customers to come in.
Yeah, because you know, the thing that we think about is having a commitment rather than just a.
rather than just a suggest.
Sure. And I wish we could have before tonight. Those are things that, yeah.
One major thing that you don't want a a hotel.
The feedback we've heard is that there's been some negative perceptions. I mean, it was stated at the Planning and Zoning Board. And and you know, some residents got up and very specifically said they did not want a hotel. Um, and so my team's feedback was, you know, they had heard that the hotel probably wouldn't be a desirous use. I opened that up to you all to give me feedback on that.
Um, zoning or not us? Or did you just?
I have not specifically spoken to staff on the issue or to anybody else on that matter.
Because um, I would tell you, and I'm short time for here. That a hotel is something that we've always talked about, but it really needs to fit into the attention of the town.
Sure.
And um, you know, I think about East Smurva Beach where they have Marriott and Hampton Inn that you can't tell that they're any different than the rest of the development. So um I'm curious about, I'm just curious and um but we really, really, really need to think about how, oops. It's in, Parker, I'm gonna blame that on you. I really, I think we need to make sure it all fits in. And that's what we've done with the the zoning and the development codes to make sure this all fits in.
And I agree with the way that your codes are written and especially that mission. Hyper specific, I guess. Or base code. That was as big as you can get in terms of what we can and cannot do. And then again, your five step process really provides about as many.
And I want people here, we got a full room, which is unusual.
I think they came because it was your last meeting.
Um, I want, I want people to understand that we've really worked hard to make this fit into our town culture.
And I do think it's important to point out, it's not again, as opposed to a lot of the comments that I think this is not what my client is asking you to give us. That is different than what you have put out. I mean, it is a, it's a P U D that asks for nothing outside of Mary's range, right? P U Ds are typically negotiated.
Yes, and negotiated, yeah.
Say, if you don't want to comply.
Yep.
We'll do something different, but we're actually doing everything. This P U D is something that's amazing. Under either the current or our proposed future land use. So it is. Yeah.
Um, anybody else at their table?
Uh, yes. Tara, thank you very much for listening to the resident. And removing the hotel. And that shows that people want to work with the town more so than do whatever you guys want to for your own benefit, but for the assistance. Um, I got a question for you on the maximum units. You have a hundred ninety units. You have a hundred fifty thousand square feet. What's the gross square footage for the multi town?
In terms of how much each building is going to be?
Under roof, the units here.
Mike, do we know? Want to come up to the mic, Mike, to the mic?
We don't have that yet.
We don't have.
Traditional. And we don't have the
Okay, because I know that Brad had mentioned it's about fifty percent residential of the property. So if it's a hundred and fifty thousand commercial and you would have at least a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of residential.
So it's in units and that, but it also a tendency of vertical development. So there's, there's a blending of that. So let's say, uh, there was a healthy mix. Uh, there was a healthy mix of studios, one bedrooms and two. You'd have smaller square footage, but you'd also have uh more much. What we're thinking is we're actually going to go into larger units less you, you know, can't. So.
You're gonna go through, you you don't have three bedrooms right now proposed, but you could, it'll drop the unit count.
Yep.
So if you add more three bedrooms, you might drop to one sixty eight, one seventy, depends on the mix.
Yep. I think the studios in this location are probably a little less desirable. Uh, this is an in-town location, so we might go to more, you know, one bedroom, two bedrooms and add some three bed.
This, uh, one, that fifty percent, that fifty percent residential is under the commercial mixed use for future land use. That's currently on the property. If you change your future land use to the mixed use activity center, that fifty percent requirement is not part of that land use. So that fifty percent requirement would only be if you kept it as a mixed use part and future land use.
Okay. All right. Um, Elise, can you go to this page on the? So right now, that's where the hotel is at.
Yes.
Which will be turned into a mixed use commercial with restaurants in the bottom.
Good president.
That's three story. Okay, right now we're just gonna be uh again, voting on the P U D and the rezoning. But the layout, when do we come back to re redesign this for the layout? I'm not comfortable with the taller buildings being on fifty. I wanted to have more of the height towards the Turnpike on the south.
If you're ready, so that would be a change. You'd like to see where you would have that as part of your motion for this P V process. We would have, you know, building layout relationship to the property and the parking as part of that general master plan. As part of this, this consideration that you have today.
And this street right here, right? It's our town street. Not part of the parking lot. It's not like the Winter Garden, um, uh, Grove. That's just a parking lot street. This is actually a street we're gonna have that goes all the way to the kids academy and swim.
Correct. That would connect to that piece through. Can you tell us a uh Stark Avenue or?
Oh, at the Stark Avenue. I'm not sure if you guys mentioned. You have a boardwalk here on the wetlands, correct? Recreation.
Yes, part of our recreation.
Now, I don't, I don't know if that's under roof or that's open space, like, you know, full grass and for events like music events or whatnot. But what what's going on here on the outdoor? I think I seen.
Mike, don't know what.
Yeah, see.
You might as well.
Outdoor activity recreation is what I have written soon.
Yes, so we have uh in block E. Full square, square, uh, green tracks. It's uh, it's meant to be a public space and then also meant to be a venue opportunity for jazz fest. Uh, concerts, any kind of uh active, uh, you know.
Like low music.
Yeah, yeah.
Like the art center here in our art series.
Art Center. And and but mainly it's just basically an open space. And it's, it's kind of the core. So you have a, this core green, floral green, basically like a town center green. Uh, and then you've got, of course, the uh wetland side and the water.
Similar to what we have at um Angry Bison that has the the park there.
Uh, bigger, bigger than that, larger, probably about three times as big as the space.
Uh, don't go nowhere, Mike.
Can you guys speak up just because they can't hear in the back of the room and?
Don't go nowhere, Mike.
We gotta get better sound equipment in here.
This building right here, it's a multifamily. These buildings right here, they're not the three story, these smaller ones, correct?
Small buildings are the two story.
Okay, so this is like a carriage home, town home style.
Uh, well, town home, but they're stacked flats.
Stacked flats, like a carriage.
Yeah.
Carriage home.
Yeah, so you have ground level units and.
Is this one down here in the south the same?
Yes, that smaller one there.
So again, back to the layout, I would like to have more of the, in my opinion, more of those uh taller buildings towards the Turnpike section and more of the two story in the front when we get back to that.
Okay, yep.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, and then commercial space, nobody had three buildings that was mixed use with commercial on the bottom. How many square feet that's in those three buildings that leaves the commercial?
So we, we, right now, we're, I think the program would be about fifty thousand square feet. Uh, or or depending on, you know, the the, so that that hotel would now become additional square footage. The three orange buildings, uh, we actually have a building that turns to the east. Uh, and there's a section that's multifamily.
I'm sorry, just raise your voice a little.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so yeah, about fifty thousand square feet is what's programmed for right now, which equates to uh, somewhere around, you know, basically ten to twelve thousand per, per building. But um, if you divide that like a restaurant, a large scale restaurant is going to be about five thousand restaurants in downtown Winter Garden or anywhere between twenty five hundred and and about forty five hundred.
That's the whole building that L shape right there mixed, right? That's the commercial mixed one with.
Yeah, I actually stopped it going to the right. Uh, but a- again, this is, this is a, that was a vision plan, so we're we need to to look at what we can do and how we can change the hotel to a mixed use building. And then look at the basic differences that would be in the plan. Because I think if we did, if we remove the hotel, we could actually bring a little bit more green space into the center, into the core. So that is, those are things we would.
So I think that the property is real important for us to get the commercial with the multiple restaurants, multiple shops where Oaklanders can spend the evening, go eat, go to little shops, whatever. And I just want to make sure we have enough space that we got a choice of restaurants to go to and not just one or two. I want to, you know, so you got maximum hundred and twenty five thousand square feet of commercial. I think we need to put a minimum in there too, to make sure we can get enough in there. So we have, you know, something for Oakland people to be able to use.
And I also think, as I asked earlier, that we need commitments to be able to do this because I don't want buildings sitting open.
So there's, there's a, there's a, it's a good point to bring up. There's balance. Okay, there's, there's balance between what is the right.
Mike, Mike.
Sorry. There's balance between what is the right percentage of commercial that can be activated and be, you know, filled uh versus over committing Baldwin Park. Uh, that had, they built everything all right then and there with the, with their commercial and they still have vacancies. They still can't fill it. Um, fifty thousand square feet in restaurant uh criteria, that's a minimum of ten restaurants. Uh, so.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. And so we'll have a mix of uses, mix of, you know, there'll be retail. But I, I'm, I'm gonna say that these are not national restaurants. These are
We want.
Local environment. Yeah, they care about the local uh uh community. They're part of the local community. Hopefully we'll, we'll have, you know, more of these opportunities. But um, we've done developments where initially they think, well, two hundred thousand's a minimum. We have to have two thousand, a hundred thousand commercial. That will kill a project if you can't sell it. So finding that good balance is where we need to be as we continue to go through this process, we'll get it. Um, and getting, yes, now what I will say is these buildings get built in a mixed use environment. It's not like assembler comes in and they already have all of their tenants from their national you know, Malta and uh, and you know, uh, Ross and all of these things. They don't, we don't have that opportunity. These will be, you build it and they will come. That's the way mixed use works. That's why most developers don't like doing it. They, they want those commitments before they even get to this part. So it's a little bit of a risk for the developer, but they feel strongly about this and and they feel strong about being in Oakland, so.
Well, I, I mean, you know, there's a known need.
There is.
And so hopefully, but don't want empty buildings.
Well, we would have, we would have, I mean, I'm not saying this in, in a way to alarm you, but the buildings have to get built first. That's, that's a doubt.
I scratched my head about the brick building behind the gas station. That's been, it's never been filled.
Yep.
I scratched my head. Why, why?
There's something to be said for a mixed use, critical mass. Four hundred people that will draw the commercial activity as well as as.
You know, and you know, I've always said for years, the mayor wants a tavern.
You know, I never heard that.
Mike, that's a good point.
Our building right there on top. If it did have living or units above, you probably, we would probably already have a tavern. We would probably already have.
I, I would promote it for mixing uses, uh, you know, if, if the office market hits the right hit, you know, that's for COVID. And this was an office park, you'd have a vacant office park.
Right. Oh, wow.
So, yeah, we want to, that's the, and this is why we did the, the memoratorium to be able to figure out how do you want uh the fifty corridor?
Yeah, so and apartments, I don't care what you call them, is a dirty word.
It is. And
Dirty town.
And part of the, part of the reason for that dirty word is because they are REIT, R E I T style apartments. These are built with wood frame. They're built for a fast turnover. And they immediately get sold off to an unknown entity, uh, uh, REIT. And that's again, a single use. And so in, in our experience, single uses have degraded over time. The most sustainable project we can do is a town center.
Yeah, and you know, uh, I am all for granny flats. I'm all for that.
Yeah.
So um, and I, you know, I'm gonna say this before everybody gets up and starts to tell me they don't want this is we have to do this. We will languish if we do not develop the commercial corridor. You know, co- commercial follows rooftop. And we are almost built out. And whether you want it or not, it needs to happen. It just needs to happen correctly.
And and one of the things I'd like to piggyback on that Mike was saying in terms of the development style. I, I represent some of those exact multifamily developers that he's talking about. Represent REITs, we represent national and regional builders of multifamily developments. I don't have anybody that will do less than three hundred units. That is, that is typically exactly the number minimum we have to have for their types of projects. And he's correct, we don't probably have the same quality building materials and design standards that you all have put into place. We'll say we're okay with and will agree to all of them as written. That makes for a more expensive product to build, but I think it creates a different feel and it creates a different quality of that product that will be here. And it's not going to feel like a garden style apartment project separate from everybody else in town because it's going to be integrated with having some commercial in some office. So maybe a thousand or fifteen hundred square foot bakery on Colonial probably wouldn't make it on its own. But if you have four hundred people who might come downstairs every day on the way to work and get coffee and a bagel or a donut or something, that's when these things start to become viable. Doing a very large mixed use project in another jurisdiction close to here, and this is exactly, no, actually forty minutes from here. Uh, so not too close, but this is exactly what we talk about is the need and ability to get smaller retailers by having those residents living right above to capture them every single day on the lunch break, on the way to work, when they're coming home from work. And that audience is so important for us to have in a town center like this.
And you know, and Mike's been working with us for years. And he wouldn't do it. I, I'm just saying, he wouldn't do anything. There wasn't exactly what the right. It's not, this is not commercial like people that. That's my, that's my.
Tara, when you're speaking of uh overall value, what is the overall value after they all said enough?
In terms of?
The value of the proxy.
Oh, that's a good question.
Would you guys have a different point for development? Is it how much the door, uh, two hundred thousand a door, two hundred fifty thousand a door?
This is going to be pricing project and it has so much because of the way it's designed and we don't have those numbers yet because obviously, as you know, we don't have, you know, all of our construction plans yet and run our performance things, but it's gonna be.
I like pricing.
What I'm looking for. But I don't want to hear under two hundred thousand a door. That would be the REIT.
We're, you know, as you know, we're, this is not our only product. We're. We're part of Riley Farm, you know, we're, we're invested in the community. I mean, it's important for us, you know, to see, you know, obviously this, this come together as a, as a huge, you know, great benefit to the area. We're, we're my partner Andy lives in Oakland, you know, we've, our offices are right here up the street. Yeah, we're here. So I mean, we, you know, this is where nine, that's our business.
I think Tara could speak to this a little bit more, but the, the, the typical commercial developer doesn't do this. It's too hard. They don't, it's, it's, it's a financing problem. It's a leasing problem. It, it, it's residential mixed with commercial, two different environments. Um, when it's done correctly with the right developer it'll be a wonderfully successful place to be. Um, I wouldn't be up here at all. So if I didn't feel like it was the best thing for the town.
I know that.
One more question. Do we have enough parking spaces? That been, uh, analyzed?
A good question. Again, the, the, from the visioning plan to the reality, we'll, we, you know, find there's dumpster locations we've gotta get through. There's, there's other aspects to the, the utilitarian pieces that are gonna probably bring some of these numbers down a little bit. Again, when you go in front of the board, you wanna go back and ask for more, so you ask for the maximum and then you get with reality.
Brad, Brad's pacing.
Question for the developer, once we get past one, you know, one through five steps and we get the permit, what's the lead time and turnaround for this to go to, uh, all the way to the CO?
We don't know yet, obviously. You know, we gotta, we don't, we don't, right? We gotta get to our approvals. We got, you know, there's a lot of things that happens, but our intention is to move rapidly through. Right now, sitting on land is a dead asset for us. You know, we wanna see it through. We wanna get the project going. We want it to start monetizing. We wanna start creating rents. We wanna start, you know, right now, just sitting on twenty-one acres.
Correct. Let's just say we got to the fifth step building permit. You have a clock to, you know, you already have a time, right? Twenty-eight months, thirty-two months, twenty-four months. So what, what would be the, the, the lead time construction to the finish?
Andy, you know, this would be a big, the site construction.
No, the whole thing.
Always. Well, if you're gonna do it in phases, right? So the plan is, you have the, you have the parts.
Yeah, sorry.
And talk loud.
It's not Mike. My name is Andrew. One zero five one Station Side Drive in Trailside. You talk nice and loud. Thank you. I was a professor for a couple of years, so I practice. So we're gonna, we're obviously gonna build it in phases and I'm gonna, you know, defer my team, but we're gonna build in phases. So you know, your land development, I mean, if you had a permit today, you're you're twelve months till you have pads ready to build, you know, vertically on it. And you're, you know, you're gonna build all that. You can put the infrastructure in, you're gonna get the pads ready. And then you're gonna start going vertical on it, you know, and those, you know, the, the mixed use buildings are probably, I mean, construction times now are all over the place. But you're, let's say twelve months, you know, for a building to go up. So if you had full approvals today, you know, you're, you're twenty-four to thirty-six months before you, you know, move somebody in, in a best case scenario.
What would be your phases, Andrew? I know that you're doing it in phases to get to the issue, but do you have several phases of?
It's not a phase that you think of like, we're gonna let this go. It's phases just for construction purposes. So however, the, the, the master general contractor would come in and look at this, he'd be like, hey, we're gonna do the center blocks first, then we'll, we'll phase this out. But the point is, is that you can't run on two buildings. This operation, this, this operation.
I just wanted to make it clear for all of us that it won't be phased out and you do, you know, eighty units and then leave a vacant land, come back and do phase two and three. I've seen master plans do that.
That would be an absolute best, you know, sash. Because you need to have, you're gonna invest all the money, you're already on the land. You're gonna invest all the money in infrastructure, right? And then you're gonna have to go vertical. And now that there's no hotel, right? All your mixed use buildings, you, you need to have the density. And Tara's point, you gotta have all the residential units, residential board, all the commercials. So you're gonna be gambling. I think we're gambling in the right spot, right, for the commercial. But you know, we're gonna be, you're gonna wanna get the whole thing rolling rapidly. And obviously they're gonna stagger the buildings, but it's not gonna be like, oh, let me sit on forty units while I'm holding six pads. Matter of just tearing through my, you know, income stream, it'd be, it would make no sense. You have to go vertical with care with what's with the motel to get the residential. It all has to get done.
And, and on the parking question, cause this was one that we spent quite a bit of time on at P and Z. There is in that plan, in the vision plan, very specific breaking down the blocks that we have on ours breaks it down to five different blocks on our plan. And it says for each of those blocks, what the anticipated square footage could be, and then what that required parking ratio would be for those uses. So it did contemplate how it would have parking, uh, be, be provided. Obviously, when we get to that final engineering site plan, we would come back and you would have very specific parking counts that would have to be supportive of whatever uses we have in that block.
Cause you know, you know, everybody, um, who comes in here for something like this is a traffic engine. Oh, I'm not kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, Mike knows what I'm.
But Brad will tell you, we, we have to comply with your code and your code does have.
I know, I understand that, but.
We have requested waivers or variances in the PD. It's, you park for your.
Traffic is, uh, uh, you know, highway fifty is a failed road. And, um, eighty percent of highway fifty goes to Clermont. So, you know, I just want people to understand, this is a state road, it's not ours. It's failed and it's not gonna get any better.
That's a, that's reminding me of another point, the master mobility plan. Master mobility plan, complete streets, all of those things favor this type of development for us. So that we can lower the design traffic speeds on fifty.
Exactly.
We complete all of these blocks.
All right, um, what else?
I'm just going back to the, the number here. I mean, I don't, it's what I see is zero to a maximum one hundred twenty-five thousand square feet right now. And make sure you get your tavern, we get our restaurant. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw out the number. What do we put? A minimum seventy-five thousand, maximum one hundred and twenty-five thousand in commercial and then a minimum of fifteen thousand uh, office space to a maximum of twenty-five thousand office space.
And unless, uh, too much.
Yeah.
That's, uh, I would say, uh, fifty is gonna be probably the minimum. By. Sorry, I was gonna say that about fifty thousand square feet is where we can get to a good uh, base level. And then, you know, as things progress, things can transition, but we actually have it in the building types to be able to convert from residential to commercial.
Okay, so then you, you only say fifty thousand, you do like commercial then plus the office space or are you including office?
Saying in general, fifty thousand of non-res, it would be a baseline. And then, you know, looking at how the market could dictate. But again, fifty thousand square feet is, it's a, it's a, it's a good amount of square footage for a, a twenty-one acre project.
You mentioned tw- yeah, two thousand five hundred to five thousand is the average restaurant. So fifty thousand could give you ten to fifteen to twenty different mixed.
Yes.
Restaurants.
Yeah, uh, fifty thousand square is basically the two core blocks of, of downtown Winter Garden. You can see that activity.
They're all gonna be restaurants. You're gonna have retail, looking at a mixture, so.
That's true.
I'm, I'm thinking if you do that, you may be lucky to get five restaurants, so.
I mean, we, we can't say at this point, but five is a, is a, I mean, downtown Winter Garden, it's about five restaurants.
Yeah, we don't wanna have.
No, I agree. No, I don't think anyone wants to end up with, with that.
We could do minimum fifty thousand, but personally, I think we need maybe a little bit more to get everything we want.
It's a, it's a tough decision to say we're gonna require a minimum and then try to meet that with vacant, vacant.
Wait a minute, Mike, he said he's willing to gamble.
I, I'm just saying. I do not wanna get stuck in town. Sorry, we, we can't do the commercial. We're doing all apartments. I don't wanna.
Oh, that's in the developer's agreement.
Mike's play is hard for us one day. Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
But right now it's zero to a hundred and twenty-five thousand in commercial. I just don't wanna say, oh, I'm sorry, we side American do any commercial.
And it's also, you have to do a hundred and ninety residential units, but it's not gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be more than, it's not gonna be zero.
Cause what, what I think we're, to the way that it's, it's established in your code, even though there's not a minimum, you have buildings designated as mixed use buildings only. So those buildings, when they go pull a building permit or when it comes back to under a subdivision, permit subdivision plan, that has to be shown as commercial. So they, if you approve the plan, not maybe the arrangement, cause that may change, but in terms of the way the buildings are designated as multifamily or mixed use buildings, you're guaranteed under this approval that they have their mixed use. Can't be just multifamily.
I understand, even as scary as that happens and then something comes up, don't want.
Right, right. So if they would wanna change a mixed use, but after it gets approved, they wanna change it to fully multifamily, that comes back to you P and Z and back to you all to have to approve that change.
Are you saying you aren't comfortable saying minimum fifty thousand square feet?
I'm saying that would be, but where I would be, I think, I'm, I'm gonna say it out of turn, but I mean, that's where I think the minimum. If you set a minimum, that would be probably the amount to set. Because that, that still is a critical mass that is fantastic for the, for the.
I mean, you can put in here maximum one hundred twenty-five thousand square feet and we're just saying a minimum fifty thousand. That's a big, huge difference and and now you're starting to scare me saying, well, I don't know, man, fifty thousand sounds like a lot. Or we could just say maximum one hundred twenty-five thousand.
I, I'm, I'm just, as a minimum, you know, we wouldn't say zero apartments and we wouldn't say zero, zero uh, uh, square footage on a commercial, we can set a minimum, but that minimum needs to have some wiggle room between, cause obviously we're not gonna get to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Trying to negotiate the minimum.
Right.
You just added another building, so now you're gonna have four mixed use buildings. So we try to up the minimum.
Yeah, the, the, the minimum, well, go ahead.
Uh, suggestion maybe is on those mixed use buildings, if you, if we can provide, think of provide us the square footage of those mixed use building, what that ground floor area is, that would be your minimum number. That would have that guarantee.
And that would be the question, is that mixed use building gonna be the same footprint as that hotel or it's gonna be?
Right, so they could provide us that number when it comes back to you all. What is that number for that area on that first story of all those mixed stories?
Because of those three buildings that are mixed use right now, what is this, what's the square footage of those three buildings? That's. What's the?
It's between ten thousand and somewhere around thirteen, fourteen thousand, I think on the footprint.
Oh, so you, so you're looking at thirty-nine thousand square feet there. And then plus whatever the hotel. So you should, you're fifty easily. And I'm assuming the footprint of the hotel was gonna be bigger than those other three buildings, right?
Not really.
That, that hotel was, um, a bit bigger, cause we went a little bit to the west. Yeah, so it's, it's probably, that's probably like fifteen, sixteen, somewhere around.
You're gonna hit over fifty thousand.
Yes, sir.
Fifteen thousand per building, sixty thousand.
Well, it's gonna, it's between ten and fifty thousand.
And there's where you get your fifty, when you, when you move the hotels.
To us. Come back to you guys another few times. So let's stop splitting hairs here.
And we can, when we come back, you know, on a, if, if we could get an approval to move forward and your recommendation is approve on a second reading to bring back the answers specifically on the removal of the hotel. Perhaps a reorientation of the buildings to have higher buildings on the back of the plan closer to the turnpike. And then providing, um, proposed minimum square footage of commercial tied to what that building footprint would be in the mixed use buildings.
The other thing that I would remind you guys is if you have these kind of questions, you need to ask them prior to the meeting. So that you have an idea of what we're trying to do here. So.
But he did ask, now's the time that we, to do that.
At your peril. Do you have any questions?
After thirty years of her saying that, no, I'm good, I'm good.
These agendas, we need to ask the questions before we get here.
Well, we, I think we. I think we've vetted this out to everything that, that we would like to see make a little bit of difference. So to answer your question at this point, no.
Oh, yes, last night, my rotator cuff is bad because of.
Because I know that we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have, um, comment. And I'm gonna ask the, um, audience to please think about what you're gonna say and how long you're gonna say it. This is not the first time, this is not the last time we're gonna talk about this. If that makes any sense. Okay, cause you got me pacing now. Never done.
Thank you, thank you.
Circling the airport.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
It's getting ready to land.
And she sounds like she's gonna miss the runway.
It's the runway. So, um, if we have folks that want to talk about this subject, you need to have signed in, you need to tell us who you are and you need to come, keep your comments brief.
Do we need to make the motion first?
Come on. Um, well, well, I probably should, but.
Yes.
Yes. There, there's one thing that, that appears to be missing in this project and the other project we're gonna talk about tonight. And we seem to be looking at this as an isolated kind of, uh, activity without connectivity to, I, I'm just. In the, in the documents that I read, and I've read painfully through all of them.
Did you read through our complete streets and our opportunity?
But I don't see that mentioned in any of the, uh, any of the things that were presented for this meeting tonight. And so kind, we spent an awful lot of time at this, uh, at this venue talking about golf cart paths, connectivity all along, pressing no mention of how that would work with this development or the others.
Question.
And so that's it. I would, I would like to see that.
It's a good question. We have identified three opportunity properties. And yes, we will definitely take that into consideration.
I would like to walk or golf cart to this place. Now, now it's not happening and I would hate to see it isolated, that Oakland become a pocket here and a pocket here. Thank you.
We'll get back to you. I promise. Yes, sir. Come on up. Tell me who you are. Did you sign in?
Yes. Donald Parsons, I live on Four Street.
Yep.
Cross where all this is fixing to happen.
I know who you are.
I know you know who I am, okay, but the thing is, you'd like to have something across the street after you've been here forty-three years, or would you rather? If you're gonna have traffic come out and you come out fifty, I don't want all that traffic coming down the road. I have a lot of animals out there. You know what I have, okay?
I do.
And I don't wanna see all the traffic coming up and down my road. If anything, they can wall up down there and they come in off fifty. I don't care. But I don't want all of it on my road. So it's gonna come out right in front of my house and drive.
Do you own?
Don't worry, all that, I've been there for forty-five years. And now I'm gonna have all this garbage coming up. It's like putting a sewer plant in front of my house.
But we wouldn't.
You know, that's just what it's coming down to. I'm gonna have all the trash coming over to my side.
Well.
Okay. On that side of the street.
We will have a traffic plan. Like I said, this is the first time we're talking about this. It's not gonna be the last. And, you know, you have been very fortunate as, cause I know you, I know your wife. Um, you've been very fortunate that this has not developed earlier. Cause Ronnie was, was working on it.
Long time.
Here is bad enough. I've already had people breaking in over there. If you can't read no trespassing signs, you know. So what am I supposed to do?
Make it really nice, and we're gonna make sure that we think about the traffic.
Yeah, because I mean, I gotta get out of my driveway, I don't wanna have.
Every time.
My driveway.
I understand, but every time we talk about this, you know, you've been there forever. And that doesn't mean that that piece of land.
People on the other side of the bridge.
Is gonna develop.
Here too, they're gonna have to put up there just as bad as we are.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to compromise somewhere.
We're gonna work together on this, I promise.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
All right, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
That went better than I expected. That went better than I expected.
You're gonna.
I'm expecting a few more cheers, we're.
You're gonna hear from the other half, the uh, uh, the nicer half, okay? Okay, um, the problem is this, as you just stated. Okay, where you guys got that main road going? It's just right on the Orange County well lot right there, just past it, right in that spot, okay? My grandkids come out there during the summer, like, okay? And they like to ride their bikes on that road. We definitely need something to divide us so that that all that community over there stays over there. When you guys just mentioned a little while ago about having music fest, where are these people gonna park? They're gonna utilize what parking they have over in the village, and then they're gonna utilize our side of the road, walk over to that music festival. And we're gonna hear it until what time in the morning? Midnight, one o'clock? I mean, we're trying to get to sleep at that time of the night or before, because he gets up at five o'clock, sometimes six o'clock. So, you know, for you guys to ask us to come over here and give us our opinion, to give our opinions and uh, what we feel, you know, I feel that we're wasting our time because you don't wanna listen to us. No, I I know we all have been coming, but, you know, you got, like Dawn said, there's another fifteen houses over there, there's a Brandon family over there, just added on to their house, because they got like five or six kids. You know, and I hear you, I I'm not, and I don't think any of us are saying we don't care. I hear you, but that's a, a, a very um, good piece of land for commercial development. It's always been slated for that. And we're just gonna have to work together to figure it out, but it's not gonna not happen.
And I think your, your points are very well.
And then we have to figure it out.
You know, I got all sorts of grandkids living on the side of the park, so we get it. So there's gotta be something, and maybe that's the direction we think about, but we might not have if you haven't come up here and said it. So it's not like we, you know, we don't care. As far as the music and stuff goes, we don't even, the stuff here doesn't go twelve, one o'clock in the morning.
No, it does.
We're all people here too.
It's, it's like ten o'clock, it's over.
But it is something for us to think about with you guys too.
Yeah.
That we do appreciate.
It's where the only house sitting there, but, you know, just uh, okay, forget about that family that's been there for forty-something. I've, my family's been on that property since seventy-eight, I know.
We get it, and we are.
We know, and I, I'm just really concerned.
I, I, I would, me too.
You know, I mean, land is getting scarcer and scarcer, and right now, I got a friend that's a realtor and he just called me and asked me if I knew anybody who had land, and I'm like, I have no idea. I said, I'm still looking for land. Eventually, maybe, thanks, but we're gonna stay there as long as we can.
Thank you.
You know, I mean.
Thank you. I get you, I, I totally understand, I really do. Anybody else? Come on up, tell us who you are.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm empty, so stand.
All right, I'm gonna stand too. Hi, I'm Ann Fulton, two-two-seven Largo Vista, and I'm sorry I'm gonna speak loud because I think it's important that everyone hear us. Um, I understand what you're saying. I drive by your place, we live in John's Landing. We drive by you every single day taking our kids to school. We see the bus stop stopping there, I actually brought this up at the planning and zoning meeting. The bus stop stops at your road, cars fly back. No one gives a shit about your kids.
I have an idea.
I used to get on that bus, I remember.
Many times, did you watch the cars zoom? Exactly, I brought this up, but it's a concern of putting in the entrance area. Ann, does this have anything to do with what we're talking about? It's in there zoning, where you're putting apartment buildings there?
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
There's not gonna, there's not planned a turn lane there, I brought this up at planning and zoning, there's not planned a turn lane. The cars already fly past when the bus is stopping. And okay, it creates a danger for all of those kids that they were just talking about.
That's a good point.
Okay. Um, so yes, that has everything to do with what we're talking about. And I would like to say thank you guys for listening to us. I was very adamant about not wanting the hotel, I didn't feel it was right for us. So thank you for listening to us, we appreciate that, and it makes me, I know that you're trying to do your job, and this is our community, and this is something that we have planned along with several other locations here in town that unfortunately the town has been sleeping on. We've all been asleep, we've all been in a coma for almost thirty years, and all of this stuff has happened. But I would like to bring one other thing up to date, because I appreciate you guys doing that. You did your job and you planned exactly what the town has asked for. My concern now is that the comprehensive plan that all of this is based off of was written in two thousand and seven when we had less than three thousand people here, and there were thirty residents involved in that. That was one percent of the town almost twenty years ago that wrote this comprehensive town with minimal updates. I would like to ask, I know we need commercial, we need all of this, we need it to sustain our future, but I would like to ask that we put a hold on any future things besides what's in the work till we can all come together as a town and revisit what our new needs are. This was written now, yes, the comprehensive plan was changed in two thousand and twenty-one. Doesn't it say just minimal changes here? All of the statistics and the one that I just printed out is all the two thousand and seven statistics.
Right, when they updated the comprehensive plan in two thousand and twenty-one, they didn't update the background statistics, but they did update all the, the older decks and policy, so it is, it was updated in two thousand and twenty-one.
Shouldn't all that be updated?
In their next update, which I think, what, I think it's due in two more years, is when that will be updated.
Okay, I still feel that, you know, Ann?
Yes. It's my last meeting.
Right? I wanna go out with a bang.
Just, you can't just storm in here and decide what we've done.
I'm not, no, wait, I did not say we've done anything wrong. I did not say we've done anything wrong, but I'm so, let me.
My meeting, I can say, I can, I can do what I want. It's my meeting. Come in here and tell us what we have done wrong when you don't know what you're talking about.
I did not say that you have done anything wrong. Fully, I did not say we've done anything wrong.
We've been asleep.
The residents have been asleep, I did not say you've been asleep.
Stop now, go sit down.
No, we said absolutely.
Down.
I said, the residents have been asleep, I said, I've been asleep, I said, my neighbors did.
Ann, the mayor is issuing a warning to you. I'm asking you to sit down as.
When I'm gone, but I don't need to hear someone tell me how to run this town in five minutes. Sit down.
Thank you for speaking.
Sit. Done.
He's not a child, don't speak to him like that, please.
Yeah.
Thank you for speaking. Now, some respect on your last speech. All right, we're done. Like, nice.
Okay.
Wanna go? Don't engage him.
Anyone that's gonna be disruptive will be warned, and then they will be escorted out by the police, okay?
It's my meeting. I, this meeting.
Hi, I'm Donna Reed, I live at one hundred Vandemere Street, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-six or so, for quite a long time. Uh, I, a couple of questions, I, I I don't necessarily have a problem with the plan that's here. The part of the plan I have a problem with is the event center, because I know an event center is going to be a lot of parking, and if you look around the event center, there's like, unless I'm looking at something incorrectly, there's no parking around the event center at all. So I have a concern about the event center, because I do agree with these people. When this is full, people are gonna find any place they can find a park along fifty, along on everywhere.
You gotta figure it out.
So I have a problem with the event center. Um, so the next thing is, when I know that.
Do you have a, a problem with the event center or the parking for the events?
The parking overall.
Okay. So I'll put that in the record.
Because I don't think it's a small event venue that things can happen, I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
No, they'll have, we have parking requirements for the square footages that are.
I know, but it's just, I'm not sure all the time that square footage is.
Well, that's what's, that's what's in our.
I know it's a standard to do that, but if you have an apartment and it has a strip foot of eight hundred, and yours says one car for eight hundred, but it's gonna, it's one bedroom, one bath apartment, and two people live there, the chances are they're gonna have two vehicles. So I'm not, I'm not. Well, and I don't think there's enough parking.
Donna, that's a good point, because right now it's just green space for the plan.
That, that's fine. Um, so I know that you all want the mom and pop restaurants, and I absolutely agree with that. I like to have a lot of uh, single restaurants that, you know, aren't big chains. My problem is that sixty percent of restaurants that open up like that fail within the first year of opening. So my problem is when those restaurants open and try to make it, and now they're sitting empty, what is to say that there can't be an office or a doctor or a mattress store or whatever else come in there? Because there's not a high chance that mom and pop restaurants make it in the first year, sixty percent's pretty high. So that was my second thing, the third thing is.
Percentage changes on restaurants when you have four hundred residents down there.
Yes, but maybe it goes to fifty percent, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just saying that's a concern that if restaurants, the restaurants or any business that goes in there fails, then what is going to be filled in when, in its place? Because I too don't wanna see, um.
That's what I said, I don't see empty buildings.
Right, and the last thing is I know when we, somebody brought up about, I think it was us, brought up about the golf carts. So we've been doing a lot of research lately on golf carts and low-speed vehicles, and I've had some discussions with the chief. And a golf cart cannot cross over Highway fifty unless it's a, unless it's classified as a low-speed vehicle. So that, no matter how you look at it, can happen. Unless there's a, we can get a bridge over fifty.
Nice, yes.
On that, and the metro plan.
So I hope that was quick enough.
We, we would love that.
Yeah, anyway, so, anyway, um, I apologize, um, but we need to keep this meeting going. And if you're, if you're not, you know, we're trying to help you understand what really is going on. So, and we've got a bunch of things to cover. So can we move on to ordinance?
No, we, we gotta vote.
Good. I'm sorry, did I get any comment if I could?
Sure. Tell us who you are.
My name is Bernard, I am in the four and ninety extension. Uh, I'm in favor of this project, and I think you need to hear from those who are in favor of it. Uh, two years ago, we had a similar type of project that came to this commission, it got voted down, because we weren't ready to do the next step. Unfortunately, that project included the demolition and removed John Slate Motel. This project does not, because that project has been sold, and we probably stuck with that eyesore for a long time now.
And it's very unfortunate that we did not approve something like this two years ago.
What we're really talking about is twenty extra apartments, because it's already entitled for apartments, it's already entitled for commercial. So these people are saying we don't want apartments, well, it's entitled that way already. We're just looking at changing it to a mixed-use activity center that gives them the ability to add a few more, extra more density to the, the property, but also have it as a mixed-use, because if you, if it's just apartments, we're gonna build apartments, and you could maybe see the commercial come later on. As mixed-use, they have to build both at the same time. And as you said, the project doesn't work unless they build the entire thing.
I just want to be sure that we have, if we build it, there, people will come.
And, and that's why I think that the best chance of that is when you have people living right by there, because they are there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, all right, so I need a motion, please. Somebody.
Eric, maybe you can give us four, three, most important things, somebody would be good.
Just.
Yes.
Yeah, did you saw the motions instead of helping here? So you'll have two, the first one will be for your Small Field Future Land Use Map Amendment, which is source on twenty-four dash zero three. That is not related to all the comments we just had about the changes in the master plan, because that will be the next ordinance. And the reverse ordinance is to, uh, if you do the first reading to change the future land use from commercial mixed-use to mixed-use activity center. There's no master plan or anything tied to that, that's just making that change. So that would be your first motion, to approve that first reading, and set your second reading for that ordinance first.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon.
All right, well, I'll go ahead with the first one then, uh, and go ahead and make the motion to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash oh three, as it is presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, any questions, any comments? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so now we're on to ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash oh four.
Yes, mayor, and so this is now the ordinance to do their zoning to plan development. This now ties to that master plan where we've had the comments, so those three changes that you talked about would be part of this motion for this, this ordinance. And, and Eric can go over those, make sure she has those.
For the rest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-four zero four, for fellow parents, not children, and have a party, to determine plan development, development. In order to, in Florida, adopting a town official zoning map amendment to adopt a new plan development. With the development agreement and master plan for the project Fourth Street Village for certain real property by Oakland West five zero LLC, generally located on the south side of West Colonial Drive at Fourth Street, as well particularly in the district. And with an approximate size of twenty-one point two five acres, making findings and providing for complex severability for an effective pay.
Couldn't have said it better. Uh, so the comments, I think if I could just address real quick things, because then maybe it'll give some comfort to the folks who spoke tonight. But in terms of that event center, we can't just have events at will. There, there's an ordinance twenty twenty-two, twenty-one that the town has adopted, has very specific standards. One of those includes that your chief of police actually has to approve part of the permit, and they have to approve things like parking. So if we can't demonstrate, there's a page and a half of criteria of things you have to submit. If we couldn't demonstrate that for an event we might be holding, then we wouldn't be able to have the event. You wouldn't get a permit issued for that event, so I just wanna make sure. And then somebody commented on a turn lane and parking. At final engineering, we'll have to come back, and turn lanes would then be designed as part of the project. It's not on the conceptual plan, just because we're not at that step in the process yet, similar to the exact number of parking spaces we have. Just so everybody understands that those are questions, that they are, when we come back with that final engineered site plan, if there's comments that we don't have sufficient parking at that time, there is another forum just like this for us to address all of that, including things like turn lane, safety for children for pickup with bus pickup and everything else. Um, on the ordinance itself, my marching orders are that for a second reading, we would bring you back a modified potset plan and a corresponding modified development agreement that would have the removal of the hotel use. It would replace the hotel on the site plan with a mixed-use building, and we would be putting higher height buildings, or three-story buildings, considering a rearrangement of the plan to put those in the back fronting um, the turnpike. And that we would provide a minimum square footage of commercial tied to the building footprints of our mixed-use buildings, and that would all be for your consideration at that time.
Thank you, Charles.
Um, so that helps people understand what's gonna happen. Um, do we have any questions at the table, otherwise I need a motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give it a shot. I'm going to motion approve the ordinance twenty twenty-four oh four with the stated considerations. Hotel being moved. Being replaced with mixed use. Buildings in the front be the lowest buildings moving towards the back. The high ones move to the back. The high ones move to the back. I think that's it, right?
Turning lane.
That's coming, that's coming back.
The minimum commercial they saw.
Come back for the minimum, the commercial. And you go back with the minimum commercial.
You got anything for us?
No, ma'am. Just your friend, you go ahead.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any questions, any comments? Okay, all in favor? So ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh five.
Hey, this is ordinance two thousand twenty-five. The small scale town future land use map amendment of its comprehensive plan from commercial to mixed use activity center for the project Oakland Village at the Grove for certain real property owned by New Horizons Investments LLC, located at the following address, one five 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 one West Colonial Drive, as more particularly described herein, with an approximate size of five point two acres, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Hey, Brad. I have a short presentation. For this one, again, this is similar. We have two ordinances. Your first ordinance is for the small scale amendment to change the future land from this property, also from mixed use commercial to the mixed use activity center. The second ordinance is the rezoning to plan development for the Oakland Village at the Groves. Next, please. Again, as we said, the property is at one five five one State Road fifty. Jevon Island Development is here. They're the applicant. The owner is New Horizons Investments, Mr. Scallion. He was in Winter Garden earlier. I wasn't sure if he'd make it or not. Mr. Scallion is here. He is the owner. This property is a much smaller property. It's about five acres. It's currently vacant. It's in your urban quarter design district. And again, we're going from mixed use commercial to mixed use activity center on the land is changed and to plan development on the zoning side. Next, please. This is the subject property. It's there on the north side of State Road fifty. They're on the east side of your town. And just so everybody is aware, to the north of this property is Mr. Scallion's project for the Grove, which is that single family subdivision that's, that's been approved by the town mission already. And he's about to begin construction on that project. So he has both of those properties. Next, please. So what this project is, it's different than what you just saw.
We came here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll try to speak louder. I'm sorry. So what this project is, it's a smaller project, it's a smaller site. It's, it is actually two buildings. It's seventy-two multifamily units with a total maximum forty-eight thousand square feet of commercial retail space. It has a density of thirteen, about thirteen dwelling units per acre and a floor area of point twenty-two, zero point two-two. Again, as before, this is being changed to your mixed use activity center because this is on State Road fifty and it does meet that intent of that land use district to create this kind of town center kind of environment. And this is a smaller property. So what you see with this, go to the next slide, not recently. Well, this is the process. I won't go over this again because everybody's here that was here before. Same process that I spoke before. There's still several more steps that this will go through if this does get approved through this process. Next, please. This is the site plan for this project. So where this is different is State Road fifty. This will be two buildings that will, will front on State Road fifty and they'll create kind of like a U shape with the parking in the center of it. The retail would be on the first floor and the residential beyond the next three floors. Total of four stories. That is what the buildings potentially would look like. They would get further developed as through the next part of the process, but they'd be pretty much in compliance.
Brad, three story.
He's getting the heck out of us.
Three stories, three stories. First story is the, the commercial. Second and third story is the, the residential. Also what he's done with the buildings, you'll see on there, there's little breaks between the buildings. That's what your design requirements require. So you don't have one face on it, but you'll get more of that detail as this moves forward through the appearance review process. Please. In terms of the project, again, with the trips and the traffic generation, this one is a pretty minimal. There is not a very big project. So again, doesn't have an impact to State Road fifteen, as the mayor said very well. The issues out are not the town's issues. They're outside of the issues and the impacts for that. So we don't anticipate any issues with this traffic. Next, please. Same with environmental phase one has been done. There is a small wetland area on the northwest side of this property, but that impacts that have already been mitigated and permitted with development with the Grove. So there won't be anything additional that would already been mitigated, impacted for that project. And there's no other significant environmental concerns, but of course it'll still have to go through all required environmental permitting. If this is moved forward, no concern with utilities and also a stormwater will need all required stormwater requirements of the town and the water management district. Next, please. So again, in summary with this one, it's request for the land use amendment to mixed use activity center. It's your first ordinance. The second ordinance is the rezoning of plan development with the development agreement. And again, why this is important for you is the town. It gives you the certainty of what will be developed there. You have that certainty and also the developer, they know what they can build also. So it is a good tool for the town to make sure you get what is best for the town. And again, if there would be any change to what you all have approved, it would come back to you while you'd have to approve any step change. Next, please. Again, with the next steps, approve it, come back to you with the four detailed engineering plans and final plans. Next, please. So from a SAP recommendation, yeah, we did find this complying with your comprehensive plan and with plan development code and we recommend approval of both ordinances. Next, please. And your planning and zoning board did review this project at their February twentieth meeting. They did recommend approval of ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash oh five for the small scale amendment by both a five to zero. And they also recommended approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh six for the rezoning of plan development with the development agreement, also by a vote five to zero. That is my short presentation and I believe the developer has the short presentation.
Franco, this is yours.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, so. My name is Bobby Johnson. I am at three seven oh nine Bobolink Lane. And Brad did a very good job and also we're a very similar project to sync on a zoning situation with down the street. Sorry.
Yeah, it's, I can't speak up. I have people online too. Camera. This up on YouTube tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, I'll try to speak a little bit louder.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby.
So here's our subject property, the one five five one West Colonial Drive. We are like right at the edge of the boundary of Oakland and Winter Garden. And next slide, please. This is just the future plan used, which, which is currently commercial. We are asking to change, like Brad said, to the mixed use activity center to get our density for our mixed use project. Next slide, please. Just kind of like reiterating that we're in the urban four door design district. So we'll have to meet specific criteria for our building type when we come back through during the T S P process. Brad touched it on already, like we have like corridors or a building so we can have like break up the architecture. Next slide, please. So here's our conceptual site plan. We are about five point one six acres with opposing a future land use of mixed use activity center. We're proposing up to seventy-two multifamily units and the total building footprint is about forty-eight thousand square feet. So that's our maximum commercial retail that we're asking. Next slide, please. And this was kind of a conceptual rendering. You see it's a little bit more of a, we're playing with some of the architecture on the building. Granted, we're still in the conceptual phase. We will be coming back through.
I like that one better.
With the brick?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, we're a little sprained. I have seen that, yes.
That's a talent, Franco.
Everybody figured that in already.
Hopefully I, if you have any more questions, please feel free to ask them.
Do we have any questions at the table?
You know, the same question from before. You can go back to the site plan. I'm bigger. So your overall square foot under gross.
The building footprint whole is forty-eight thousand and then three stories. So times that by three is there. Eight four.
One forty-four.
One forty-four?
One forty-four, yes.
Yeah, one forty. I never do math at the podium.
Two eighty-eight.
So hold on a second. Let me just rephrase that. The commercial square footage is twenty-nine thousand. Placeable is, but it's second and third, it's forty-five thousand change.
So. But the building footprint, it's like we're just going to the maximum. So it's like, because we like to be like conservative of upfront. So like the building's footprint, we have two buildings that are roughly twenty-four thousand square feet. So that's how we got to forty-eight thousand total for this future land use. Yes, correct.
Some of the same questions. Do you have any commitments already for the commercial?
Well, we just started marketing as we speak. I just signed the lease, you know, with Collier. And as of yet, no, I mean, we just started, well, there's a pandemic commitment here, but I'm expecting some, some high people, some high fun brain, some good names of restaurants. And we want to stay quaint, but try both sides. Far as leasing goes, I don't have a number yet. It's a bit of some names soon.
Andrew, no.
No, it's not yet. It's, we just, we just signed the lease.
We're gonna, we're gonna echo some of the same, you know, what we mentioned earlier, mom and pops, original tavern. I mean, all of these.
Bunch of empty commercial.
Yeah.
But that's not a decision.
And he doesn't wanna do a bunch of like strips in or kind of what he wants to do.
So connectivity. You have a property, you have homes back here, correct? The Grove.
Correct.
Now, are we gonna be able to connect here with golf carts?
It's a pedestrian connection between, there's a pedestrian connection on the west side and then there's also a pedestrian connection on the east side that's called out on the site plan. And now typically carts are not allowed on trails or sidewalks within the city. So it'll just be a pedestrian connection.
So there's not gonna be no connection to the neighborhood back here? No connection to the neighborhood, the north at all?
A pedestrian connection.
Pedestrian.
Correct. Not a walk of ball, like a walk of ball kind of a community, not a off cart swizzing through down trails. That's not contemplated in the city. That's.
That's what we want.
But not on trails.
No, we can't. We cannot have golf carts on trails.
All right, wait, hang on.
Yeah, we cannot have off carts on trails.
No, you can't. But, you know, I would urge you to think about golf carts in accident report and back.
Yes.
Okay.
Put a golf cart connection. So, yeah, but you can get a golf cart from the neighborhood behind or drive through the Grove, you know, through the gates.
Yes.
Yeah. And. I mean, like gate would be, I'm not gonna leave it open for, from the retail area, people could just walk into.
Where you're not putting gates in.
It's expensive time just in those just trying to look away that we can have golf carts can get to the same.
Well, I'm gonna say given meaning a gate that was going to be for the people that live in the Grove, if they wanna walk through the gate to get sandwich or dinner. Talking about a private gate, you know, with a swipe card.
We don't, we, we have, we abandoned gated communities many, many, many years ago.
But I'm talking about pedestrian gates. It's not really a drive-through gate.
I think you just need to come back to us.
So what exactly?
So think about what you just saw earlier on Fourth Street. There's no gates.
No gates.
Okay, now on the north side of Colonial, we wanna have connectivity with anything built on Colonial, which means that on the benefit of your own building, we can go in our golf cart and go to the tavern, go to the nail salon, not me, but my wife. My student store.
Somehow buy golf cart. It doesn't necessarily have to be through the Grove, maybe.
Correct.
Turn back there, you still run, that's Colonial.
We know gates.
Did the golf cart path on the road in the subdivision to this complex, this is a golf cart path. Have these signs that are golf cart only.
Be at the Grove, you know, cutting through, getting in, into the village.
Or anywhere.
Correct. To your benefit and to the benefit of the citizens, everything on Colonial north is connectivity, bike, walk and golf cart. That's the future.
See, we're excited about your project and having a restaurant, but you could drive our car, golf cart to have dinner and then drive home.
Brad, see to look at it right now.
And bring it back.
Yeah, you can, you can look into it.
Yeah, bring it back. Give us an idea. That's what we need. Think about the fact that someone said it's, and what we thinking about.
We have an opening in the night. Section.
You guys can work with Brad on that.
Yeah.
You don't have to decide that right now.
Okay. This is beautiful.
I like it. I like the brick. Now, some of the same questions. Lead time, start, finish, all the way to the C O. After these five steps, I just wanna know what we're looking at.
That's much, it's a much more simpler project. So start, finish, for three years.
Three years? Okay.
That's.
That's all I wanted to hear earlier. That's it.
All right. So we took the last two resolutions, ordinance, spread their sister.
Do you have any work?
Thank you, Franco. Thank you, Bobby.
Franco, anything else we have questions at the table about? Okay, so I need a, a motion for C twenty twenty-four dash oh five. Can we take them both at once? It should be a separate. Okay, thank you. All right, I need a motion for twenty twenty-four dash oh five.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two four dash zero five?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or any comments? Come on up.
I just wanna make you clear. I'm very happy with the comments from the commission mayor. I think it's personally insulting to think that the houses north of this development are any better, any more privileged than the houses rest of Oakland. I think we all want connectivity to that development. I just wanna make that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, anything else?
Donna. I'm Donna Reed, one hundred Vandemere Street, once again. I'm looking.
Donna Reed, one hundred, abandoned area street, once again, I'm looking at this and I just don't quite understand. I think, unless I'm incorrect, if you're going east on fifty, are you going to be able to turn in, or is there going to be, you have to go down the five forty-five and do a U-turn?
I don't know that we've gotten to that point yet.
I think they talked about it in planning and zoning, that's the reason I asked.
Okay. Brad, Brad will answer. Paper here.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I believe at this point, it would have to be gone down and do a U-turn, but that permitting would be under FDOT, because that would be based on DOT access guidelines. So they would regulate what kind of turn lines would be.
It's just so dangerous, U-turns, I don't care where they're at, are just so dangerous. So I think that's something that needs to be looked into. The second thing is about the golf carts along Highway fifty, once again, I did some more research on that. And I think, I mean, you have to look into it, but if the sidewalks are, you see they're five or six foot. Then they can have a, a golf cart can drive right on a sidewalk if it's five or six foot, but I don't know if it's a long Highway fifty or not. I'm looking up, look it up and see, because if that's the case, and you want connectivity, then just the people developing the property can just pay to widen sidewalks.
Okay. All right, we'll talk to the chief. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the sister ordinance is two thousand twenty-four dash oh six, do you need to read it into the record?
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing for zero six, an ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a town official zoning map amendment from agricultural A one to plan development PD. With a development agreement and master plan for the project Oakland Village at the Grove for certain real property owned by New Horizons Investments LLC. Located at the following address, one five 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 one West Colonial Drive. More particularly described herein with the approximate size of five point two acres, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for no activity.
Brad, do we really need to talk about those? Do we have any questions?
No.
All right, so I need a motion, please.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh six. Where the contingency to look for golf cart connections, the gate thing isn't part of this. So, yeah, well, that's the contingency to look for, what happens for golf cart connections.
Okay, moved and seconded, anybody have any questions or comments?
Golf cart, bike, or pedestrian.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
No gates.
That's not part of this, though, that's, yeah.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have one resolution. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh one. Oh, Parker, Parker.
So, for our commissioners, thank you, for the record, it's me, my goal, and I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, correct.
Speak up.
And frankly. At the previous commission meeting, I pressed a presentation by Joe Williams. With all the reasons why it takes a good solid revenue strain to operate our utility, and also provides capital structures and capital replacements. It was explained at that meeting that the town has not, had not increased the sewer use charges to customers since the two thousand seventeen seventy, even when Clairemont or Frehman providers had continued to raise the cost to us. This resulted in the need to adjust wastewater charges from six dollars per thousand to seven twenty-five, seven dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand. And to implement a wholesale pass-through charge tied to the CDI dash U index, so this doesn't happen again in the future. You also heard that it was necessary to adjust the multi-family per unit base charge to reflect seventy percent ratio of the single-family base charges. It should be noted that this will only affect one customer, the avenues on Oakland, the apartments. It was also noted that the wastewater base charges for commercial or non-residential properties would require adjustment to reflect standard AWWA factors. Again, this will only affect commercial, residential wastewater costs. With all the foregoing, taking into account a mid-year adjustment to utility rates is required. These adjustments, while minimal to our customers, are necessary for the continued financial health and well-being of our utility and are proposed to take effect April one of this year. So with that, Michelle Galvin, a consultant with Rathellas, our financial partner. And I will attempt to answer any, any further questions.
Oh, we talked about this at our last meeting.
Yeah.
So, I need, please.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh one.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any questions, any comments from the audience? Bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Thank you. Parker, do you have anything else?
Out of the bank. Just think about it, like, go on then.
Okay, Sal.
Just want to mention the event we had yesterday was fabulous, extraordinary, thank you, Mayor. It's serving here with you, and we're gonna miss you a lot, and we wish you could stay. We'd like for you to come anyways, consultants.
I'm gonna stay in my living, but.
I'd love for you to come over here, just, you know, make sure you keep the meetings efficient.
So, again. You're also the great example tonight, but, okay.
It was good, it was very good, thank you very much.
Yes, and I, this has been, you know. I don't, you know, people have their own opinions, but this has been service of a lifetime.
Yes.
Thirty years, and I have tried to make a difference.
You did. You made a big, the town wouldn't be the same without all those years you served.
We might not even be a town, we may, it may have been part of Orange County.
In the beginning, but I thank everybody for everything they've done, everything.
We, we had a standing ovation for the world standing yesterday, but today, we could all stand up.
We have the best intent. Thank you, Sal. So, Rick?
Just got one thing, Donna Reed, you're still here, right?
Yep.
Want to hear it, so I was gonna post about this last week, you know, behind the customer, the president of Oakland. And they went there to get a PO box, and she went to all detail. And the person behind the counter said, oh, you qualify for a free PO box, she said, oh, really? So she didn't even ask for a free one, they let her know she was able to get free PO. Thank you, Donna.
Donna, hey, Donna, thank you.
Thank you, John Boy.
Good night, John Boy. Andy, I'm sorry, I did not ask you.
Oh, you're fine, no, I just, same thing as the rest of the commission, you've been here a short period of time, but in my first two months, you took me everywhere and introduced me to Oakland and everybody.
That you needed to know.
Orange County, I needed to know, and so I appreciate that, it's been a lot, it's helped me tremendously. It'll help me in the future here in Oakland, so I
I'll leave my town manager report as it ends, and just wanted to congratulate you and appreciate everything you've done for me as well, so thank you.
Mikey? Don't do that.
Thirty years is a long time. You're just going on. That's all. Thank you. I love you.
And my husband came to this meeting, which he doesn't usually do. So I appreciate that very much, I appreciate this will be very short, I appreciate the staff. I appreciate the residents, I appreciate everybody who really works toward trying to make this town a better place, and I do want people to get involved. And I'm always happy to see a fairly crowded meeting, because usually it's like three staff members and us. So, it's just been, it's been a pleasure for the most part. So, thank you, thank you very, very much. So, oh, Joseph is in here.
And the one other thing, and I think we do need to say as much as a thank you to you, and it's Jim to you and to Caitlin for all the years that you put up with the concat. That you, you stick here on us, so we appreciate that, Jim.
You're nice.
Offhand besides the family.
Really difficult spot, because he, you know, it's hard for him to balance, you know, people who are, you know, not happy with me or are happy with me, he's been very good about staying out of this. And letting me do my thing.
Thank you.
So, someone needs to speak for Joseph?
Yes.
Of all hearts, you reckon I'm gonna do it?
Of all hearts and mine are satisfied, we will adjourn at nine oh eight.
Thank you.